Good afternoon. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 1:00 PM and time to call to order. The City Council of Rancho Mirage, the Library and Observatory Board, the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. The flag's blue, I'd like to ask Gabe Cockney, he would be so kind.
Yes. Ready? All right, Kristi, would you do roll call, please?
Of course. Councilmember Kite.
Kristi.
Councilmember Smotrich.
Here.
Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wile.
Here.
Mayor Hobart.
Here. We'll move on then to non-agenda public comments. Jesse, would you handle that, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If you are joining us remotely with the Zoom app and have a non-agenda public comment, please use the raised hand function, or if you are using your phone, dial *9. But before we go to those who are joining us remotely, we will go to those who are here in person for any non-agenda public comment. Is there anyone in here in person?
Good afternoon to those here and those at home. My topic today is the insurrection of the In-N-Out project at the Las Palmas Shopping Center. My name is Maggie Lockridge, and I was a candidate for the Rancho Mirage City Council this year with an extreme desire to on-seat either Mr. Kite or Mr. Wile. I ran for council as I had seen such blatant disregard for the needs of the people of our city. I watched 25 or so local residents speak to the Planning Commission last year as to why In-N-Out would negate their right to quiet enjoyment of their homes and neighborhoods. They would have 1,500 to 1,800 additional cars and thousands of people from all areas of the valley intruding into their neighborhoods until 1:30 in the morning, when all other businesses essentially close at 10:00. In September of 2019, I watched while each member of the Planning Committee sat with such disinterest as to the speaker's comments. They nodded patiently throughout the four-and-a-half-hour meeting, perhaps the largest attendance of the council's history. I was hopeful that in spite of their disinterested appearance, they were listening to the comments that had others in the audience distraught, some to tears. I was hopeful that at the end of this meeting, they would take a recess to discuss the heart-wrenching and neighborhood-impacting comments that had been made. They did not choose to do so. No words spoken that day, words that represented your constituents, some spoken with tears in their eyes. Frightened for their children's welfare had meant a thing to them. They went direct to a positive vote. They could not give their people even 10 minutes of their time to at least make it look like they cared. Mr. Stephen Jaffe and I received over 4,000 votes between us. That is certainly impressive enough to show this committee that minimally 2,500 voters out of 5,400 are opposed to this restaurant in their neighborhood. Iris, you opposed your neighbor building a two-story home in your vicinity because it might impinge on your quiet enjoyment and your privacy. Can you see the hypocrisy here? Evidently, what is good for the goose is not good for the gooselings. I watched Mr. Hobart demean, demoralize, and condemn Mr. Stephen Jaffe as an attorney for 27 minutes when I am limited to three minutes. He had asked to speak as a citizen attendee. I am ashamed of the people leading our city. Yes, Stein Mart has failed. Why a discount department store was approved within a one-quarter mile of three other discount department stores, Ross, TJ Maxx, and Marshalls, to begin with is without reason. Our neighborhood needs a grocery store that would have saved our shopping center. You now have an opportunity to right that wrong, to listen to your people, and to do your people's bidding. Why In-N-Out is once again being brought before this council is beyond the pale. Your residents have not changed. They stood up to your past decision the only way they knew how, by suing the city over your illegal actions. Yet you chose to go ahead, to thumb your nose at the residents, and to proceed to the same In-N-Out project. Shame on you. Jesse, I understand I owe you an apology, because one of my opponents declared that I had offended your department in one of the comments I made. I made a comment that a 38-acre lagoon in Section 21 would lose approximately 40,000 million gallons a year in evaporation. I had a lot of help in figuring out that number, and I stand by it. But if I offended the department, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more non-agenda public comments for anyone in person? Seeing none, we'll go to those that are joining us remotely. Again, if you are on Zoom, you can use the raised hand function, or if you are on the phone, you can dial *9. There are a number who have their hand raised, so I will start at the top with Randy.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. Hello, my name is Randy Filish-Hurch, and I am a resident of both Rancho Mirage and Los Angeles. I am also a district leader volunteer for Humane Society, United States, and the Southern California Representative Volunteer for Project Coyote. I am a volunteer. For many years now, I have noticed the proliferation of black poison boxes throughout retail, shopping centers, and residential communities here in Rancho Mirage. These black poison boxes do more than just kill the rats that come for the bait. When the rat comes out, it's a slow-moving target, and then it poses a fatal threat to birds of prey, such as owls, hawks, and other wildlife, such as bobcats, mountain lions, coyotes, and also includes domestic pets and feral cats. In so many cities throughout California, we passed resolutions urging against the sale and use of these rodenticides. I do believe if most people knew the fatal effects of the second-generation anticoagulants, they would never allow their pest control operators to spread these poisons throughout Rancho Mirage. In my own gated community here in Rancho Mirage, our Mira Vista Board of Directors removed these dangerous poisons once they were made aware of the ingredients and the fatal effects. Fortunately, this week, on Tuesday, Governor Gavin Newsom signed a bill co-authored by Santa Monica Assemblyman Richard Blum to restrict the use of rat poisons that have been linked to the deaths of mountain lions and other wildlife. Fortunately, after years of pushing this through, this assembly bill, known as the California Ecosystems Protection Act, it will become law in January 2021, banning most of these anticoagulants. While we are elated that most of these poisons, which are in these boxes, will be banned, we need to know of alternatives which are non-toxic and that we can use for rodent control. In my own community of Calabasas, we use Propel, which is sprayed on, and it repels all rodents. You can also use Good Nature A24 traps, because they are more humane than other traps, such as snap traps, and we also do never recommend the use of any glue traps. For more information on non-poisonous solutions and non-toxic alternatives to rodent control, you can just Google it, or you can go online to raptorsaresolutions.org or poisonfreemalibu.org for tips on how to find safe alternatives and save our pets and our wildlife. I am aware of the fact that Rancho Mirage does not have an environmental commissioner, nor does it have an environmental commission, which I would recommend in the future to do, but in the interim, I think we all need to do our part to make Rancho Mirage a safe community for not only ourselves, our families, our pets, but also our native wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Laura Clark. Laura, can you hear us? I show that you're muted. Laura, can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you, Director. I would like to address something I saw on Channel 4 newscast on September 27th. The news posted a written statement from, quote, "The City of Rancho Mirage" in regards to the In-N-Out project. It read, quote, "The project never went away. The first lawsuit was dismissed with prejudice, which means the city's first SEQA determination remains valid. In the context of litigation, sometimes misinformation may be disseminated in the community as a strategy to confuse the matter," unquote. This is a completely false statement. In-N-Out publicly declared on January 29th that the project was dead, and you accepted their termination of the project. Furthermore, no court has ruled that the previous EIR was valid. In fact, it did not meet the stringent requirements of SEQA, and due to that, it was withdrawn and is now of no effect. If a finding of validity had been made by a court, why did In-N-Out bother to spend the time and money to prepare a new draft EIR to replace one that was already valid? The statement further goes on incredulously to insinuate that misinformation is disseminated to the community. I would argue that it is, in fact, you who are disseminating myths-truths. I don't know if you are listening to confused legal counsel or someone who is spewing non-factual information. Are you not concerned with truthful statements that you issue to the media? Perhaps it is time for a public information officer who can fact-check statements before release. If you are at all concerned with the ongoing lack of transparency by your group, you would immediately issue an apology and a correction, stating the facts as they are and not as you wish them to be. Your bias towards this project and your coziness with In-N-Out, to the point that they are representing you on your current Brown Act lawsuit, is as nauseating as it is repulsive. I implore you, to save yourselves from further embarrassment, please fact-check your statements before going to the media. That concludes my statement.
Thank you. The next attendee with the hand raised is Jim Elliott.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Oh, good, it works. This is Jim Elliott. I'm the president of Save Rancho Mirage. Laura Clark, who just spoke, kind of stole my thunder, but I want to expand on that. I was intending to say pretty much the same thing, but I'll add a few comments to it. I was interviewed this week by the local NBC affiliate, KMIR, regarding our responses, Save Rancho Mirage, to the In-N-Out draft environmental impact report. I was going to quote the statement that the city made. I won't do that. But I want to set the record right, since the comments made by the city to KMIR regarding the In-N-Out project appear to be in response to my interview aired this week and frankly directed right at me. The project did go away as a result of our lawsuit. In-N-Out withdrew its application, which was accepted by the city. What the city's trying to say is they made a mistake in accepting the withdrawal. Regardless of whether the city may or may not have made a mistake doesn't change the fact that the application was withdrawn. Further, In-N-Out and the city decided to prepare the draft EIR. This is a direct result of our lawsuit. This is further confirmed by the fact the judge awarded attorney fees to Save Rancho Mirage and said, "We won." I attended the hearing. I heard the judge say it. In-N-Out would not withdraw the application if not for a lawsuit. So anyone's guilty of spreading misinformation into the city. Further evidence is the current lawsuit regarding the Brown Act violations, where the city tried to conceal and improperly notice the public of a meeting where the In-N-Out dismissal was discussed. All legal and political options remain open to Save Rancho Mirage regarding this project. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. The next one we have on the line is Brad Anderson.
Hi, this is Brad Anderson. I live in the city of Rancho Mirage. I wanted to mention a few things. At the September 17th City Council meeting, I want to clarify the record here. The city manager misrepresented the facts, and he stated that, well, actually, my comments concerning the September 3rd meeting, where the telephone number was incorrect, or was it valued, or whatever the situation was, I wasn't able to attend that meeting, and I imagine other people were not either. And on the September 17th meeting, I made remarks to that, and the city manager misrepresented himself and said that the city contacted me twice through an email. This is true, I did receive an email the day before the meeting, so on the 16th, concerning the September 3rd meeting, and I actually had to do a public records request, and those are the records he's referring to. So that's information that I requested, and I never had any idea why the number was at operation until he explained himself on the 17th. So that being out there, I want to emphasize that I've had issues with code compliance in my house lately, and I would hate to think that the city is doing any type of reprisal or actions against me for my involvement in certain activities, but it appears that way to me. And that goes with, well, anyway, I just want to emphasize, be ethical, be just worthy, because when people are upset with the city, they're not upset with the city, they're upset with the five trustees or board members, council members. So we should probably name them by name. And one last thing I'll leave you with, I noticed that the city doesn't report out of closed session, and I believe that they should, because we really don't know what goes on in a closed session. So, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. The next one on the list, I don't have a name, but I want to read the last four numbers of your telephone number. Again, that's 1-9-2-0. Okay, IT is telling me that phone number is not going to be active. So the next one on the list is Susan St. Louis.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. I'm a Rancho Mirage resident, and I'm interested that so many people, somebody needs to... Thank you. I'm kind of surprised that there's so much commentary today having to do with the In-N-Out burger, because we are actually facing a much larger crisis here in the desert. Most people's outstanding investment in their lives is their home, and we all are residents of the valley, and the Salt and Sea is dying, and we're not doing anything to save it. And so I wanted to request that the City Council of Rancho Mirage approve the Salt and Sea Coalition's resolution for the Salt and Sea Management Plan people to consider the option of ocean water import. And this is really important. It's a really important issue, because all of the plans that have been considered and talked about by the Board of Supervisors have been partial projects, small projects, things like the North Shore Habitat that they've talked about for a while. These are all projects that are going to save a very small portion of the Salt and Sea and leave the rest of it to desiccate, to turn into toxic dust, and to blow across our homes and the valley. We can't allow that to happen. There's too much at stake here, people's health, people's property, and it's everybody. It's not one single group of people. There were, in 2018, the state accepted 11 proposals from various groups for ocean water import ideas. And ocean water import is the only thing that is going to save the Salt and Sea as a whole. There's no way to save it unless we get more water into it. And ocean water import is actually completely feasible. If you look at all of the projects that have been done in California with water, the LA Aqueduct, California Aqueduct, the California Water Project, these things are all, they were all much bigger projects, much more expensive projects. We need to look at ocean water import. It's completely doable. There are 11 proposals on the table. Nobody has looked at them seriously. The Salt and Sea Management Plan, the committee that runs projects and renovations for the Salt and Sea, they have refused to look at those and consider those. And we want all nine cities in the Coachella Valley to require that the Salt and Sea Management Plan consider ocean water import and be serious about it by dedicating 1 to 2 million of the $507 million that are available for the Salt and Sea to doing an engineering review, which would determine which of those proposals are doable, if any. And we know that they're doable, but we have to figure out which one is the best one, and we have to start moving forward. It's going to take a long time to save the Salt and Sea, and if we don't do it, everybody is going to be a loser. So I would request that you would support us in this. You've been sent already, I believe, the new resolution on the Salt and Sea, and I'm asking if you will support it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that, I don't know, six months ago, or thereabouts, the Rancho Mirage City Council went on record as supporting the ocean, ocean-to-ocean water as compared to one of the other offerings for a solution. Have you spoken to Bob Terry, Ms. St. Louis? If you haven't, Bob Terry would be a good person to get a hold of.
Yes, actually, I have spoken with him, and we met as a committee last week and talked about this. And the problem with the resolution that the City Council signed six months ago is that it included a reference to the 2003 Salt and Sea Restoration Act, which failed to look at ocean water import as a method of fixing the sea. And so, since it wasn't an option in that plan, if you refer back to that plan, then it's going to be another reason for people to delay and obfuscate and not do anything. So we're just asking if you will sign a changed resolution that takes out that reference to the 2003 Salt and Sea Restoration Act, so that we can then push hard for consideration of ocean water import.
Thank you. You, Jesse?
Okay, thank you. There is no one else on the Zoom app with the raised hand, so if there's anyone else who wants to speak, you can raise hand, or if you're on your phone, dial *9.
While that's going on, I'd like to back up a step. I do believe that I did not call to order and have a flag salute at the beginning of the meeting, and I'd like to have a flag salute. And Ted, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Certainly, Mayor, it would be my pleasure. Place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic...
...for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and freedom...
Thank you, Ted. I'd also ask Kristi to take roll call.
Mr. Mayor, Kristi does have the roll call on record, correct, Kristi?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. Yes, we did take care of that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We'll move forward to Councilmember comments. Does anybody have any comment they'd like to make?
I'll make a comment. Mr. Mayor, I may. Seems appropriate today to maybe make these comments. As restaurants across the country have closed their doors many permanently, fast food and fast casual chains have taken the opportunity to claim the market and plan to utilize drive-throughs to help expand their reach. While drive-throughs have been a staple of fast food revenue since the 1940s, representing at least 65% of the store's revenue, they have become more popular in 2020. Accordingly, to one recent poll, 74% of Americans have visited a drive-through either the same amount of time or more than usual this year. While overall revenue has taken a roughly 30% dive across the board in almost $300 billion industry, at least domestically, McDonald's store revenue was only down 2.3%, and Popeyes reported same-store growth of nearly plus 25%. The drive-through window has helped to drive that growth, and industry leaders have taken note. This is part of the touchless method of doing business. Popular burger chain Shake Shack will introduce its first triple-lane drive-through. Mexican fast food restaurant Chipotle now plans to add additional drive-throughs, and Taco Bell, a drive-through favorite over the past few decades, is updating its model. They have streamlined their kitchens to create a four-minute wait time. Starbucks has updated espresso machines, which can pull shots faster. All of their stores will have drive-throughs except in dense urban areas with a high walking count. Both Taco Bell and Chipotle will offer a mobile priority lane for orders. All of these companies knew the coronavirus losses would be their gain in transforming their method of doing business. In Rancho Mirage, we already have drive-throughs for McDonald's, Krispy Kreme, Wendy's, and Starbucks that serve food and beverage, and additionally, CBS and Walgreens Pharmacy and several banks. Virtually all of the COVID testing is done by drive-throughs. The convenience for those people with limited mobility or disability utilize drive-throughs to a great extent. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anybody else like to make a comment?
Mr. Mayor, this is Jesse. Before we continue with Councilmember comments for the record, I just want to put on the record that everyone for non-agenda public comments that were here or remotely participating did not have any more comments, so we concluded the non-agenda public comments. Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of comments.
Flora, sure.
Okay, thank you. Well, as most of us know, October is the great shakeout month in California, and although we have been a little bit sidetracked with the pandemic, we are still having all kinds of safety programs going on. In fact, as a rule, at City Hall every October, we do an Earth In fact, uh, as a rule, at City Hall every October, we do an earthquake drill where everyone kind of, uh, drops, uh, gets under their desk and holds on. And when the drill is over, we all meet out in the parking lot to make sure that we are all well and good. And then, uh, we also have a emergency preparedness commission that goes to Sunnylands. But getting back to the library, because now we have a variety of things going on, uh, one of them is a family virtual night at the library in the children's department. Uh, this is a Zoom event and it's going to take place on the first Wednesday at, of every month at 5:30 PM. And then we are also having a fire safety month get-together by Zoom on October 7th at 5:30 PM. So you can see on your screen, it gives all the information about how to get onto the Zoom and please be aware that Zoom is required on your, uh, computer. So if you have problems downloading it, please check your computer or go online and go onto the, uh, library's website. So that'll help you out there in regard to our family virtual nights at the children's section of the library. And then next time, uh, you have an opportunity, because this is a time when we're all aware of our, um, earthquake supplies or our emergency supplies at home, and this is a good time to check them out, especially since in the last couple of days, we've had clusters of earthquake emanating from the east. And in fact, yesterday, I felt a 4.9 earthquake, uh, as I was sitting in my living room. And, uh, these are some of the times that we can take an opportunity to check out what kind of supplies we have and how we can either update them or add to them. And as you can see on some of the photos here, these were photos that I took over at the Michigan Hills Country Club presentation, uh, which they do annually in regard to emergency preparedness. Uh, as you see on the screen now, these are items I have in my own home, including a wind-up apparatus that will enable you to have a radio, a flashlight, you'll be able to, uh, charge your cell phone. And, um, it is completely, uh, wind-up so that you don't have any problems with any batteries. Uh, in the next photo, you can see a few of the other supplies I have, um, managed to put into my collection. And, uh, one of them is an appliance hose, one of them is a porta potty, and, uh, also some camping equipment. And you'll see in the next slide that there's some food, emergency food in the way of things that are high in protein or that are good for your own taste buds and can be stored. But keep in mind that you should check the dates on the bottoms of these, uh, items. So I have a habit of checking every October because that started my supply. So every October, I go through my supplies and make sure that they have not expired. If they have, I, uh, replace them with new items. And one of the things that everyone loves are the, uh, protein bars. And you can store them for a great, uh, long time. And, uh, they're really pretty high in protein and desirable by all. So that's a good time now for you to look at your supplies, see if you need to add anything. In this photo down at the bottom, you can see that I have a camp shower. And it, it fits into this little container. Uh, there's complete instructions and something, especially in the summertime, all these supplies are things that we're going to want, especially, uh, something like a shower. So moving on back to, uh, the, uh, activities over at the library that are geared toward children, I wanted to make comment about something that our children are able to get and the parents can stop by. And we have one item here that comes into play, which is our little blue bag with safety items. And if you pull the strings on the bag, you can see how it can make into a backpack. But if you go by the library, you can pick up this bag. It's, this is all geared toward fire safety. So, uh, pick up a couple bags if you want. There's a little fireman's hat that goes with it and, uh, your children will get a kick out of that. There are some crayons that go with it and they can be used for the coloring books and activity books that are supplied. There's about five of them here and you can see them, but you can see them up close when you go by the library and just help yourself and your kids will get a kick out of it and they'll learn how to be more prepared for fires. So that's my comments and I hope you'll take the opportunity as we are getting further into October, make sure that you are emergency prepared and that your children are aware of all the supplies you have and how to prevent any disaster as far as fires. And, uh, if you have any questions, feel free to come into our library and ask some of the staff or go to your, uh, website at the fire department and you'll get more information as you need it. So thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, and that's my comments.
Thank you. Richard?
Ted, good afternoon. Good to see you today.
Good to see you.
The weather, as you noticed, is cooling down and now it's time to head outside and start on some of the projects around the city. Rancho Mirage Community Park will have some various areas upgraded. The basketball backboards and poles will be painted. The basketball court will also be resurfaced. The basketball upgrade project will begin on October 5th and will require the basketball courts to be closed for the next 14 days. The handball court will be resurfaced after the basketball courts and will be closed for seven days during the resurfacing project. New DG ground cover will be replaced around the basketball courts and handball courts. It's that time of the year for all of the reseeding to take place in various areas around the city. This will take place throughout the month of October. And finally, the Rancho Mirage Dog Park will be closed for the month of October for its annual reseeding, detail cleaning, painting, and annual maintenance. All of us in City Hall welcome everyone to enjoy all of the Rancho Mirage city parks through the coming season. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Richard. Let me just add a PS to your comment. When you say now's the time for everybody to go out and play at the park, you mean once the all clearance on the virus has been, you don't mean along with the virus, am I right?
The, the parks are open for usage other than being closed for maintenance.
Well, I understand, but people still have to exercise caution about what they do out in the park. Anyway, I did, I've raised that point and I'm, uh, we'll move right along. Charlie?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. City manager comments. Jesse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just two comments today. One is, yes, our parks are open. Uh, we have taken some safety precautions at the parks, so we have some signs up. We have sanitizing stations at the parks as well. Um, and the other comment I wanted to make was that if you subscribe to the city's traffic alerts, you may have gotten an alert this morning. Um, and as part of the city's roadway maintenance program, the annual slurry project will begin next week. Uh, this project will apply a rubberized slurry in the northern section of the city. So when you see the construction workers out there, please drive careful. Um, and we're expecting this northern section of the city to look much more beautiful in the coming weeks as we apply some new slurry out to those roadways. And if you are not on our email list and getting those traffic alerts, it's very simple to do. You can go to the city's website. There's an icon on the top of the homepage. Uh, you click on it, you simply put your name and your email in and you click on the I want traffic alerts and you will get those traffic alerts sent to you. We will keep residents up to speed on the project and every week we will send out the affected, uh, construction zones so that everyone is kept abreast of what's going on in the city. Uh, that is it for me, uh, for comments, and I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, for the approval of the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we have a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Is there a second? Who seconds Charlie's motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll say.
Thank you very much. It's been moving seconded. Um, Jesse, I mean, Christie, you want to take the vote?
Yes. Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We'll now move to the consent. Jesse, you want to take that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we have five items on the consent calendar today. Item number one is appointment to the Community Parks and Trails Commission. Item number two is approval of California Choice Energy Authority entering into a long-term resource adequacy agreement with Calpine Energy Services LP on behalf of Rancho Mirage Energy Authority. Item number three is final acceptance of improvements for parcel map number 30150. Item four are contracts. Item five are demands. And before going to the council for consideration, I want to open this up for public comments on the consent calendar. So again, if you are joining us remotely on the Zoom app, uh, please use the raise hand function. If you're using your phone, you can dial star nine. Before we go to those joining us remotely, is there anyone in person with comments on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will move, uh, to those joining us remotely. Seeing no comments, um, I will turn this back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Can we have one vote perhaps for all five? Can somebody make a motion to approve all matters on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor to approve all matters on the consent calendar.
Is there a second? Please vote, Christie.
Councilmember Kite?
Yeah.
You voted?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Or me?
Are you a yes vote on the consent?
Yes, yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. I now move to the action calendar and Jesse, where do we go with that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a public hearing, so we're going to open the public hearing up. Uh, the city's director of administrative services, Kofi Antabom, will handle item number six. Kofi?
Thank you, Mr. Ekinrod. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This item is to hold a public hearing on annexation 182 into Community Facilities District Number One. This is the second and last step in the city's standard process for annexations into Community Facilities District Number One. The first step was approved on the August 20, 2020 council meeting with the adoption of resolution number 2020 dash 31. The territory proposed for annexation is located on the northeast corner of Dyna Shore Drive and Los Alamos Road, commonly referred to as the Del Webb Project. This annexation is the final of the three annexations and covers 378 of the 1,200 residential lots slated for the entire project. At the conclusion of today's public hearing, provided written protests have not been filed and in the absence of a majority protest, the council may consider adoption of the attached resolution, calling an election, declaring the results of the special elections, determining the validity of prior proceedings, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing recording of an amendment to the notice of special tax lien. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. And that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions of staff?
Mr. Mayor, before we open this up to the council, since this is a, uh, public comment period, I want to open it up to the public. Uh, again, if you're joining us remotely and using the Zoom app, please, uh, raise your hand or if you're on your phone, you can dial star nine. Okay, seeing none in person and none remotely, I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Can we have a, can we have some discussion on this or a motion by the council, please?
Well, if there's no, if there's, if there's no comments or questions from the council, I will make the motion.
Excuse me, Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Before you do that, I do need to, um, announce and declare the election results. So I'll do that very quickly.
Go ahead with that, Christie.
Okay, so the ballot for the 103 eligible votes was received on September 30th, 2020, and was in favor. Therefore, votes cast in favor equal 100% of total votes cast.
Okay. Thank you so much. So, okay, so we've gone through the recommended process. Number one was the mayor opening the public hearing. Number two, the mayor asks city council or city clerk for election results. And number three, the city clerk declares election results. So I will go on to the motion, which is that the city council adopt resolution for 2020, next in order, calling an election on levying a special tax within the area proposed to be annexed to Community Facilities District Number One, annexation number 182, declaring the election results, approving the annexation of the territory, and directing the recordation of the amendment of the notice of special tax lien and, uh, in connection with approval of preliminary development plan permit PDP 17001.
Is there a second? Is there a discussion? Is the public have any, but, but he has to be discussed?
There was no one earlier, Mr. Mayor, in person or on the remote, and there is still no one in person or, uh, remotely who has their hand raised. So the public comment for this is over.
Thank you. Any further comments by the council? Okay, wait. Do we, Jesse, do we have a motion pending?
Yes, we have a motion from Councilmember Iris and we have a second from Councilmember Townsend. Christie, would you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we will move to the second public hearing that we have today, and this is going to be done by the city's associate planner, Joy Si. She's going to handle item number seven. So Joy, take it away.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Uh, for your consideration today is the periodic review of eight development agreements in accordance with Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, Chapter 17.56, Regarding Development Agreements. Uh, this requires the periodic review of active development agreements to determine if the subject property owner is performing in good faith with the terms and conditions of their respective development agreement. This item was presented to the Planning Commission on September 10. So there are currently eight active development agreements that are subject to this periodic review. These include the following. The Rancho Mirage South Storage, Weston Vacation Club, 111 Plaza, McKenna, which is originally known as Stonebridge, Del Webb, Ferrari, Carefield Assisted. Del Webb, Ferrari, Carefield Assisted Living, and the residences at Rancho Mirage Country Club. Please note that the Section 31 and tentative track map 36620 development agreements are not included in this review since their periodic review commences on the first anniversary of their effective date. This table here summarizes the status of each agreement's current standing. All eight development agreements are considered to be in good standing as their properties are being properly maintained and in compliance with the existing terms and provisions of their respective agreements. Notices were mailed out on August 11th to all affected property owners and developers, informing them of this meeting and periodic review. Staff has not received any outside correspondence regarding this periodic review. The Planning Commission recommended that the city council find that the subject developers and property owners are currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the aforementioned development agreements. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to address any questions that council members may have. Thank you.
And thank you, Joy. Before we go to council, I would like to open this up for the public hearing for public comment. So if you are joining us on the Zoom app, you can raise your hand. Or if you're using your phone, you can dial star nine. And before we go to those joining us remotely, if anyone in person has comments. Seeing none in person, we'll go to those joining us remotely. Seeing no comments from those joining us remotely, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Does any member of the council wish to comment?
Yes, I have a question actually for Joy. For all those people that are watching and not familiar with the property status, there are two of them. Number seven, the Carefield Assisted Living. And number eight, the residences at Rancho Mirage Country Club. They are both listed as stagnant. So can, Joy, can you please tell us what stagnant means and how that moves forward?
So during this periodic review, we contact, staff contacted the developers or property owners of those properties regarding the progress that was made or the property status of their project. So they were concerned to be stagnant because there's currently no activity going on. The developer for Carefield Assisted Living did note that due to the current pandemic, it did, it did push off a lot of the progress that was being made as assisted living facilities were heavily affected by the pandemic. However, as noted in my staff report, they are still very much interested in moving forward once the time is right. And even though these, in my, in the presentation, it did state that it's stagnant but in good standing, they are still meeting the terms and conditions and timelines as noted in the development agreement.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Smotrich, I just wanted to add, this is Jeremy, real quickly. Just because no work has been done currently on some of those projects doesn't affect the entitlements in any way. So they are still entitled projects that could move forward in the city.
Great. Okay, thank you so much, Jeremy. Enjoy.
Is there any further? Seeing none, can we have a motion?
I will make the motion that the Planning Commission recommends that the city council find that the subject developers and/or property owners are currently in compliance with the terms and conditions of the following eight development agreements: Rancho Mirage Self-Storage, Weston Vacation Club, 111 Plaza, Marketman, Stonebridge, Del Webb, Ferrari, Carefield Assisted Living, and the residents at Rancho Mirage Country Club.
And I will second that.
Please conduct the vote, if you would.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
We've done number eight. So that gets us to the end of the program. Do we have any report from the city attorney or any comment about closed session?
I don't think we've done eight. We have one more item. One more eight. The COVID thing. No, we did seven.
We did eight out of order.
No.
Mr. Mayor, we still do have action calendar item number eight up. And that is something that I will handle, so I will go ahead and take that now.
Okay.
This COVID-19 staff report has been a regular lineup in our agenda since the pandemic started. And the staff report has one action item and some discussion item that Gabe Cottin is going to update us on. The action item in this staff report is to approve an order extending the face coverings until November 5th. November 5th is the date of the first meeting in November. And this order will extend the mask covering until that date, till that meeting in November. So that is it for the action that's on this staff report. And Gabe is just going to give us some updates. Gabe?
Thank you, Mr. Ekinroth, and good morning, good afternoon, Mayor and city council. Today, want to give a quick update on the Great Plates Program, Great Plates Delivered Program. That program is currently in place through October 9th. To, through today, the current stats on that program are 271 participants enrolled. Now, these are seniors age 60-plus that are at high risk for the COVID-19. And to date, through today, about 96,000, almost 97,000 meals have been delivered to those, to the doors of those participants, three meals a day. Total funds delivered to Rancho Mirage restaurants that are participating to date from May through today, October 1st, is 2 million, 2.1 million. And the city's cost share reimbursements for administering this program are a little over 133,000. As of right now, there's no current word if that program will be extended. Each time it's been, it's been extended, it's typically happened two or three days before. But we ready, we're ready to stand by if it is extended. Or if the program does expire, we're prepared either way. The second item, Mr. Ekinroth and city council, was to discuss the amphitheater. But there was some recent guidance issued this week on parks and openings and guidance. And so we're going to, we're going to pull that one and do that at another time while we kind of go through that guidance. And then also as the, as the, as the, as our county looks at what tier they're going to be in. So we do have some concepts regarding our amphitheater. But we do want to do a little bit more research on those with our legal and with insurance and then bring it back to the council for a formal recommendation at a later date.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any comments to make regarding this?
Yes, I do. I just want to say that to Gabe and your staff, you're doing outstanding job looking forward to not only helping the amphitheater come alive again with a wonderful series, and also that our restaurants will be incorporated into this, giving them a great venue to promote their establishment. So bringing this back in a more time when we can look at it and make a vote on it, I think is a smart move. But thank you for everything you're doing in the out-of-the-box thinking of you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, council member.
I would still discuss that we receive and file this report.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one action item, and that was on the extension of the face covering. So before we come back to the council, I would like to open this up for public comment. So if you are joining us remotely with the Zoom app, again, you can use the raise hand function. Or if you are on your phone, you can dial star nine. But before we go to those joining remotely, is there anyone in person who would like to comment on action item number eight? Seeing no one in person, I will go back to the remote Zoom users. Mr. Anderson has his hand raised. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Brad Anderson, City of Rancho Mirage. I'm sad to hear that you're going to extend the face covering until November 5th. Of course, I'm concerned about all these actions, mandated actions to, you know, really it restricts people's liberties. But anyway, I just, I just want to state that. And I have grave concerns about the able-bodiedness of this council too, after listening to the remarks today. But I really want to emphasize, I noticed one of the council members now mentioned that COVID testing is done with drive-throughs or, and I agree, there seem to be done with drive-throughs. So I would recommend that, well, anyway, I'm actually opposed to any of these mandates. And I understand you're concerned about this virus. And I know that the council has made some false statements and some of these extended orders have extended to yet stay. So you are not, not in compliance totally with all these restrictions. And that's all I have. That's what I'm going to be nice to say. So anyway, thank you for letting me talk again. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Anyone else who is joining remotely, you can use the raise hand or if you're on your phone, star nine. Seeing none, that is it for public comments. Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back to you.
Is there any vote required that you see here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city council extend the face coverings mandatory through November 5, 2020.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
I move we adjourn. I gather we have no, assuming we have no legal reports to hear, the motion appropriate.
We, Mr. Mayor, we do not have any closed session items today. But I just want to make one comment about the COVID issue. So, and you all probably know this, but in California, the state decided to bring some uniformity to all these mitigation measures for COVID. So every county in California is assigned a tier. And they're, you know, they're colored tiers. And currently Riverside County is in the red, is a red, in the red tier, which means that there's some substantial exposure. And so the state analyzes all of this data that they use to decide which tier a county falls into. They do that every Tuesday. So one day or one week, we may have, be under one tier and have certain restrictions. And then it may change on Tuesday. So that's why you're seeing some fluctuation in what's going on in the county with respect to these mitigation measures. So I just wanted to mention that. But I have no closed session items today.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Okay, if there's no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some vote.
Second.
All, all in favor, I?
I.
Those know. Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned.